Two down, three to go. That's what I told our staff after the King Philip School Committee Candidates Forum, which ended just about 15, 20 minutes ago here on North TV. This is our third Candidates Forum in two nights. Last night, we had the North Attleboro School Committee Candidates. Earlier this evening, the King Philip School Committee Candidates. And now, our final Candidates Forum, the two-man race for a three-year seat on the Plainville Select Board. This is one of two specials we are running on our Plainville channel and also on northtv.net. The other is a one-on-one interview with the incumbent Jeff Johnson and one-on-one interview with Stanley Wydeck Jr. This forum will feature a total of eight questions. I will ask six questions, and the candidates will ask a question of each other, and then I'll close out the night with one more question to the candidates. The questions that I asked will be questions that either candidate can answer, so it won't be targeted toward one individual. We will begin and close with opening and closing statements. We'll get to that in a minute, but first of all, I want to remind you that Election Day in Plainville, the annual town election, this year will be on April Fool's Day, and you'll be the fool if you don't go out and vote. Monday, April 1st, polls will open at 7:00 a.m., they will close at 8:00 p.m. Everyone votes in the Public Safety Building behind Town Hall. Go in the entrance between Town Hall and the library on South Street. Our first opening statement and everything we do tonight was determined by a coin toss. Jeff Johnson, the incumbent, won that toss. He will be Candidate A, and therefore, we'll have two minutes to deliver his opening statement. Jeff?
Thank you, Peter. Good evening. My name is Jeff Johnson, and I am the incumbent Chair of the Plainville Select Board. Let me first say how grateful I am for the opportunity to serve you for the last six years. It has been a challenge, but one which has brought me great joy is, together with other members of the Board, the administration, and other committees in town, I've been able to lead us from some of our toughest moments to perhaps the best state in our town's history. My professional background is as a project manager, leading cross-functional teams to solve tough problems. Learning to work with others to draw the best out of everyone, to focus on common goals and work towards a solution, trained me well for my role as a Select Board member. When I ran six years ago, I laid out certain goals. We had significant financial challenges. We had consumed most of our stabilization fund and used our free cash to balance our budgets. At the same time, our budget planning had grown too aggressive, and our free cash generation was drying up. Our water quality was poor, and we often had insufficient capacity. We were too focused on short-term needs and had lost sight of longer-term goals. So we got to work. I wrote financial policies to guide us. We made difficult decisions to bring the budget under control. We made operational changes and investments in water to improve quality and quantity. We created a facilities management department to fix and maintain our building infrastructure. We increased the professionalism of our departments. This debate is an important opportunity to contrast two very different candidates, and I welcome it. But in that context, the primary question we should be asking in this election is, are we better off now than we were six years ago? Who is more able to not only protect that progress, but lead us into the future?
Thank you. Our second opening statement will be delivered by, I'm going to call you Stan the rest of the night, but Stanley Wydeck Jr. Stan?
Okay. Good evening, Pete, Jeff, and good evening, Plainville. Pete, I want to thank you and North TV for allowing us to have this debate. To the folks in Plainville, I am Stanley Wydeck Jr. I have lived in Plainville since the '50s and have been involved in town government one way or another since the early '70s. Over the years, I had spent numerous years or several years on the Select Board, and I feel that it was my tenure on that Board that helped Plainville come out of its worst situations. Yes, we did spend too much money in the beginning. It got us in trouble. We had severe cuts and stuff like that. But I can also say, under my leadership, we got out of all those situations, and we are in a good shape right now. Plainville is fine, and I want to continue to make Plainville fine for the rest of the century. And I think that at this point, things like I am so conservatively doing things, I don't want to get into the problem that we had before where we all of a sudden think we have extra cash and spend it. We have to be very frugal. We have to make sure that our taxpayers get what they deserve, and in that sense, I think that I can lead the town for the next three years. Thank you, Plainville.
Thank you. Our first question, and the first to answer will be Stan?
Yes.
Followed by Jeff. The question is this: You have both served on the Select Board. You've each had accomplishments while in office. I want to know, while you are a member of the Select Board, what are you most proud of?
I think the thing that I'm most proud of is being on the planning board and working with the Commerce Park. We started a building, and then later on, what happened was, the building was bought by Thermo Fisher. And I think the proudest day I had was when we were cutting the ribbon at Thermo Fisher, knowing that we had a beautiful tax base and we had the jobs, the high-paying jobs, coming into Plainville. That, in my sense, was one of the best things that I can ever remember as being a selectman. Also, as people know, I used to hate the fields where Thermo Fisher was. So that had a special meaning to me by being there and having Thermo Fisher there. And I'm looking forward to maybe having another few companies come into the area. Thermo Fisher has some more room there. Hopefully, we can get them to build another building next door, and then maybe they'll even take over the warehouse, because having a Thermo Fisher in Plainville is huge.
Jeff, what are you most proud of?
That's a tough question, Peter, because we've done so many things. I, my initial thought was to answer with the financial policies we put in place, but I really am most proud of the fact that the Boards and committees in town are working better together now than they were five or six years ago. We have a relationship especially with the School Committee and the Finance Committee that is really the envy of some communities where those committees often are struggling with each other. The amount of respect I have for the Chairs of those Boards and the other Boards in town is amazing. We have a wonderful group of volunteers that are working together to make Plainville better. And frankly, it can't be the job of just one person to make Plainville better, to answer our challenges. It's the job of all these committees and groups that work together. And my willingness to work with those people and talk and listen to what they need and make sure the Select Board supports them where they need it, I think, has helped make a difference.
Question number two, and Jeff, you will be the first to answer. I asked what your proudest accomplishment was. I don't want to call it a failure, but what was your biggest disappointment since becoming a selectman?
I think my biggest disappointment easily was our inability to properly manage the budget when we had a situation where we were out of money, didn't have enough money to afford what we had built the town up to be back in 2019. And the fact that we hadn't used our free cash properly and we hadn't maintained a stabilization fund put us in a spot where we were forced to ask for an override. And my biggest personal failure is that I didn't find a way to manage that situation better, to find a common ground where we didn't ask for such a big override and maybe wouldn't have had such excessive cuts in the budget that followed. And that's, that was really a hard time, a disappointing time. When I look back at it, I have spent a lot of time thinking, how could I have managed that better, so to make the result less severe? And it really tore the town apart instead of bringing the town together. One of my goals is always to bring people together to work together, and that didn't happen then. So I would say that's my biggest disappointment.
Stan, well, you were on the Select Board, Board of Selectmen back then, I believe it was called.
Yes, it was.
What was your biggest disappointment?
I think my biggest disappointment was our DPW just fell apart, and it really hurt me to see that it crumbled. We used to have a fairly decent DPW, and they tried to do everything. And when that kind of fell apart, it, it made me kind of wonder, why did it fall apart? And I don't know if it was the Select Board didn't give them enough encouragement, or something fell apart there, and I can't really put my finger on it, but it was upsetting to me to see such a turnover in a department. And so I have to say that it's, you know, still having turnover, it's still having turmoil. Nobody's been there more than four months, five months, six months. Stuff like that is upsetting to me, and I just don't know what the town has to do to establish that department to be good. The police and the fire are doing fine, I think, and we just, and the schools are doing good. It's just the DPW, we're having some serious problems there.
I hope you guys are Celtics fans, because the Celtics are mentioned in this next question. Okay. Then-Celtics head coach Rick Pitino once told reporters, quote, "Larry Bird is not walking through that door, fans. Kevin McHale is not walking through that door, and Robert Parish is not walking through that door," in response to questions about the team's lack of success. A similar quote might be, "New funding from the federal government for COVID relief isn't coming to Plainville. New funding from Thermo Fisher isn't coming to Plainville, and new funding from Apotho Therapeutics isn't coming to Plainville. The truth is, rising costs will eventually catch up with and surpass that new revenue." I want to know, and let's see, you will be the first to answer this, Stan. Am I being too pessimistic, or are you also worried about how the town is going to cover its future finances?
Peter, that question is very good, because I am very, very concerned that right now, things are rosy. But my old saying is, you can't save a penny one place and spend two pennies in the other place. We have to be so diligent on our monies. It's not going to be coming out of the trees, as people say. There's a downturn in the economy right now with the interest rates being high, the permitting people have held back on. So the idea is, right now, we have to be careful. Granted, maybe 2025 will be good, but I worry about 2026, because if there's nothing coming in the pipeline, then that means the taxes are going to go up, and that's the last thing I want to do, is try to raise the taxes so we drive out the poor Plainville people that are there, or the elderly. We have to be concerned about stuff like that. So we can't grow too big, and I'm a firm believer that we have to take baby steps. I understand we've, you know, moved, had a lot in certain things, but we have to be very cautious, because we could overspend and be back in the same situation we were before.
Jeff, am I being a negative Nellie, or are you also worried about the town's future finances?
I'm not sure worry is the correct word, but I would say we need to be, as Mr. Wydeck said, diligent. Proposition two and a half, no matter what, it means you never are out of the woods. You always have to be on guard, and that limits our growth. The fact that we will see less new growth, I expect, over the next two to three years than we've seen the last two years, will also be a challenge. You'll see that reflected in the budget we're preparing for Fiscal 25 right now. We aren't hiring a bunch of new people. We aren't having a big increase in the school budget. There are a lot of areas that we're just holding our own. And really, the goal has been, for the last year, frankly, that what we do is sustainable. We don't want to ever go back to hiring somebody one year and laying them off the next. I don't want to do that. Our town administrator doesn't want to do that. The rest of the Select Board doesn't ever want to do that. So our focus is really on, but it's sustainable. And we think we've got a good, sustainable budget. I think Fiscal 25 is going to be good, but I think we're going to be challenged again in Fiscal 26. When the Tri-County bill starts coming due, we'll be challenged again in Fiscal 27 and Fiscal 28. Proposition two and a half never lets you get bored or complacent with your financial situation.
Question number four. Speaking of finances, and you mentioned Tri-County, residents in the towns that make up the Tri-County Regional School District overwhelmingly approved the building of a new high school with a $286 million price tag. Plainville, with the third-highest percentage of students attending Tri-County, will be on the hook for a projected $1.4 million a year. It's still a ways off, but at this point, how would you propose, Jeff, the town pay that $1.4 million a year?
This is going to be a very difficult decision, and probably the biggest challenge for the next year and a half, to figure out what we want to do and what the townspeople will accept in that regard. This will become the second-largest building project in our town's history, and will stay the second-largest until we replace one of our own schools. So it's a consequential decision. I think we're going to have to look at multiple choices. One choice would be to roll over some of our existing debt exclusions that we've passed for education in the past, both for our local schools or for KP, and to roll that forward as a partial payment. We're going to have to make some budget cuts. We're going to have to use some new growth. That may be one option, where we mix the two. Another option that the townspeople will want us to propose and to see the impact of is, what would it mean to take the $1.2 or $1.4 million a year straight out of our budget? And have some choices also on what services would be cut or what we would choose not to do because of that. It's going to be a hard decision. It will be incumbent on us this summer to prepare two or three scenarios, present them, and listen to what the people have to say. But there's no easy answer here.
Same question to you, Stan.
The Tri-County situation is going to be large, as my opponent said. There's no question about that. My thoughts on this, we're going to be coming off of some money off of King Philip, I think, and hopefully, it's going to be around maybe $400,000. So if that's the case, we've got a million-dollar debt. Now, I am hoping, I am very optimistic, that there's a possibility that we could get table games at the casino. And if we ever got table games at the casino, then we would take that money, put it into the gaming stabilization fund, and that would ultimately help us for the next 12 years, maybe, because I think we've got maybe around 12 years left of that money coming in for the Town Hall and the Public Safety Building. The other thing is that we would have to maybe tighten the budget on certain things, and then later on, possibly use a little bit of free cash. But my hope is that we get table games. Maybe I'm a little optimistic of that, but that could help us tremendously.
Question number five, and Stan, you will be the first to answer this question. In a report issued by Princeton University, researchers predict that 100-year floods will happen every 1 to 30 years. Based on the weather we've experienced over the past six months, it looks like they might be right. North Attleboro has an issue with the Ten Mile River. Town manager Michael Borg has said, "It does no good for North Attleboro to dredge their portion of the Ten Mile River if Plainville and Attleboro aren't going to do the same." So it's not a unique issue with just one single town. My question is, what is Plainville doing, and what should the town be doing to minimize flooding in town?
You have to remember, the Ten Mile River starts over in Plainville, so we do push our water to North Attleboro. If Mike dredged the old river there, the old, where it's contained, it would send more to Attleboro, so Attleboro's going to almost dredge theirs to get it to the reservoir if they want to really do it the right way. We have a couple areas in town. We just have a situation where we had a solar farm come in, and unfortunately, the solar farm has taken the area south of Commerce Park, or north of Commerce Park, excuse me, and flooded that area. We are working on trying to get some areas that could help re-drain that area out by Harvard Street and kind of reduce the amount of flooding for those people there. But all in all, if we don't have Kelly Boulevard area, which is Thornton Street in Plainville, that really doesn't flood there. The biggest areas we have of flooding is down by the Ten Mile River in West Bacon area. And as I said, the solar farm is creating a big problem for us over there on north of Commerce Way, which we're going to have to address it somehow.
Jeff, what is Plainville doing, and what should the town be doing to minimize flooding?
Well, the biggest thing we're doing immediately has been to reclaim the Harvard Street drainage area and rebuild that totally. And that has actually performed pretty well over the last month or so with that work done. It did face a severe challenge on Saturday with the failure of a basin at the solar farm, leading to a lot of flooding on South Street that just overwhelmed it for a couple of hours. But I was surprised at how quickly it actually recovered. We have to keep working on that area, because that whole area of South Street floods too easily, and it covers a large number of neighborhoods. Secondly, we do have to look at the waiting river, the Ten Mile River, excuse me, and how that flows through the center of town, especially as we look at other development that's going to occur in the center of town. That may be an opportunity and also a reason to improve the water flow through there. But water will seek its level, and when we have increased rain and increased flooding, we can expect that this challenge is going to continue. As for the solar farm itself, that's a situation the planning board, I think, really needs to work with that developer to improve that. We've got, we've got a major problem for a lot of neighbors to that development.
Question number six, and Jeff, you will be the first to answer this question. While we're on the subject of water, the new Turnpike Lake Water Treatment Plan and the cost of meeting the new level set by the state for PFAS will be yet another thing that adds to the strain on the town's finances. How do you propose the town pay for this, and will this impact the town's new and improved bond rating?
I don't think it's going to impact our bond rating, because I think we're going to figure out ways to pay it that the Moody's and the bond rating agencies will appreciate and understand. As a matter of fact, we did explain that that project is coming, so as part of the bond rating change, they expect us to be looking at a project. We have arranged the capability to do very low-interest financing for it, which is important in this day and age. Potentially zero interest, actually, for the first 15 million of the project. We are actively seeking more federal aid in terms of water treatment, especially because of the new PFAS requirements, and I'm hopeful that that will help us with a million or two. We also are looking at our rate structure. I have a desire to change our rate structure so it's less dependent on a large, flat capital fee for every user, and instead, make sure that the users who use more water are paying more of the capital cost for this. It's not fair to balance the development of a water treatment plant on the backs of people who are very low-water users, especially our elderly and our smaller households, and expect them to pay as much for that improvement as we're asking our businesses and our large homes. So we're looking at restructuring that to help pay for that as well.
Stan, how do you propose the town pay for the new Turnpike Lake Water Treatment Plant? And do you believe this will impact the town's new and improved bond rating?
As for the bond rating, it shouldn't hurt the bond rating, because it's pretty much known that we are going to be needing a new treatment plant. Along with that treatment plant, we're going to need a new well. So originally, everybody was using the value of $10 million. Well, that $10 million was already, if your PFAS is 100. Then it went down to 20, then it went down to 4. So they keep changing it. On the towns and all municipalities in the state are suffering that. But at the same time, what we've got to do is, we've got to use the existing monies that are going to be interest-free, as Jeff said, and then later on, we have to, hopefully, come up with some other monies, possibly money that the Clean Water Act had. Years ago, they had a Clean Water Act. Hopefully, they'll have another Clean Water Act or something if the government steps in and helps us on that, because as a fact of life, you pay $16 for your water, but you pay $60 for your capital charge. So what happens is, you're paying $240 for your capital charge, and you're only using $16 worth of water, and it does hurt the elderly and those people.
Thank you. I want to thank the two of you, too. You're doing a great job of ending your responses on time. All right, that's my questions for now. I'll have one more question at the end. The candidates will now ask one question of each other. According to the coin toss, Jeff Johnson will ask Stan Wydeck the first question.
Thank you. Stan, you put up a great sign across from St. Martha's the other day, and my compliments on your choice of color scheme and sign layout, by the way, which identifies you as Plainville's watchdog. In your one-on-one interview, you also identified as two of your major concerns, the costs of the Tri-County building project and the impact of INI, inflow and infiltration on our sewer capacity and our ability to grow. Earn my vote. Explain to me how you will be an effective watchdog for Plainville in those two areas.
Okay. In regard to the INI, they were actually working on that today, okay? We have to get our INI under control. We have a lot of upper money. That INI should be done yesterday, so that way there, North Attleboro doesn't penalize us or allow us to have new growth on that type of situation. Right now, North Attleboro has said, "We can't send any more stuff to their sewage treatment plant." We have stuff on Route 1 by 495 that would like to go, but without any sewer capacity, they're not going to do anything over there. So that's my INI problem. And being a watchdog, yes, we have to stay on that. I mean, I saw them out there today. I stopped, I looked at it, I saw that. They're getting the cameras, the flow is good on that, because that was the new section. They were doing from Commerce Park onto Shaolin Lane. The other part you had, Jeff, was?
Tri-County.
Tri-County. Tri-County, everybody needs an education, okay? Everybody needs an education. If somebody has an air conditioner or a plumbing problem, they're going to call somebody. I've seen the kids from Rentham, from Walpole, from Plainville working. So in regard to Tri-County, again, I'm looking for table games to help pay for that.
Your response to his answer.
So my concern is functioning as a watchdog and what the work that that means. I think we agree, INI, for instance, is a very serious problem. But there's a difference. During 12 months as Chair, Mr. Wydeck didn't once have it on our agenda at a meeting. In my first term as Chair, we worked on several issues identified in 2018 and 2019. In my current term as Chair, we've discussed this at several meetings, executed camera analysis of the mains, just approved an RFP for lining the primary sections of the sewer mains. Tri-County as a building project, the second-most expensive project in our town's history. Four years ago, our watchdog lobbied to be appointed as our rep to the Tri-County building project, citing his experience as a builder. It seemed logical to me. But he missed 31 of the last 36 meetings of the building committee. That, to me, is an absence of watchdog function. That, to me, is an absence of watchdog function. That is not representing Plainville to the Tri-County building project, nor is it providing the feedback to Plainville as they designed that building about what was going on. And that, to me, was a failure. I agree we need the Tri-County building. I agree we need to figure out how to pay for it, and that's going to be a challenge. I question who can the real watchdog be?
Stan, it's your turn to ask a question of Jeff. This is my favorite part of the.
Jeff, as chair, many, many times, you don't let people talk in the audience. And Plainville still has a Board of Selectmen for three people. We are not a big enough town to have a mayor. Why do you shut people off so much at town meetings, at select board meetings?
It's a fair and interesting question, especially coming from somebody who's been allowed to speak for the last three months on every single topic. As you know, because we've discussed this before, open meeting law does limit what can be talked about to what's on the agenda, and you must have it published in the agenda. So at times, people in the crowd will stray from the agenda item, and that discussion needs to stop, because it's not fair to the people who were informed what would be discussed versus what's not to be discussed. Secondly, I always make sure, as you know, in the agenda, we have a spot before the meeting for anyone to talk about any item they want, if they let us know ahead of time. And at the end of the agenda, if there's a topic where I did not allow discussion, for whatever reason, during the meeting, people are free to comment, and I take all the comments that they have about the item that was on the agenda. During the meeting, there are items which we want input from everybody. But there are other items where we are trying to finish some business for the town, and that's really a business meeting, and we are trying to discuss that business openly. We still allow comment, if not during that item, at the end of the meeting. That's, I disagree with your overall context that we don't let people talk. We let people talk more in Plainville than any place else for a select board meeting.
Your response, Stan?
The only thing I do remember is being on the plan, I mean, being on the select board. And when I was the selectman and I was chair, I would let people talk, and Jeff, you would say, "You can't let them talk about that." So maybe that's something that I kind of remember, that happened a bunch of times. You would, you know, kind of muffle me, but that's neither here nor there. That was years ago.
All right, final question. Downtown Plainville. Growing up as a kid, if my family drove through Plainville and I blinked, I missed the downtown. It's a little better now. Looks like it's going to be fantastic when Jeff Kinney is done developing the other corners of downtown Plainville. Have you guys ever considered renaming the town Wimpyville or?
Don't even go Wimpyville.
Okay. It's going to remain Plainville. But my question is this, and let's see, who gets to answer this first?
I think I do.
You do. The lower level of that new building that is proposed, restaurant, I believe, retail, et cetera. Is Mr. Kinney being too optimistic of how retail will do in downtown Plainville?
I don't think so. I think Mr. Kinney has the experience of opening the best bookstore in all of southeastern Massachusetts, an unlikely story there. And I think he knows the challenges. I think it will be a challenge for him, but I think he's up to that. I think his plan is conservative, but at the same time, wonderful for what he plans for what we call, what he calls, thanks to Christine Moore, Plainville Square. We're not changing the name of anything else. But it's going to be a tough go. We have to be patient, though, because that vision he's shown us is going to take, it's going to take some years to get all the demolition done, to work through the different stages of development. But I'm excited by it. I'm excited by his thoughts and visions for Phase Two, which he hasn't even shown publicly yet, because he wants to see how Phase One goes, but he has ideas already out there. It is going to turn Plainville from a place you drive through to get to Rentham, or a place you drive through to get to North Attleboro. Instead, you're going to drive to get to Plainville. And I can't wait for this to take place and unfold and see what Plainville can be.
Same question, is Mr. Kinney being too optimistic?
I don't think he's being too optimistic. And the reason I say that is, I remember many years ago, that I pulled into the back of Falky's, and Jeff was there with Julie, and we were looking at the building, and he said, "Well, maybe I can take the back down where the butcher shop was and try to work on the front part." And then later on, after he got some people involved there, they said, "Well, we'd like to restore it, but it's really beyond restoration." So he took that, he took the building down, he did a marvelous job on putting a building up there. He had a lot of problems with the ground conditions and stuff like that, but he plowed through them. So I did say, at one of the meetings, I said, "Go west, Jeff, go west." And that means that he is taking the adopted center of 106 and 152 and bringing it back to 1A and the Bacon's Streets. So in my eyes, I don't think he's being too optimistic, because a little bit here, a little bit there, and a few new things here will spur other people. So kudos to Mr. Kinney. I wish him the best luck in the world. I would love to see it happen tomorrow, but it is going to be years out.
Very good. Thank you. You guys gave great answers all night long. I've learned never to joke about Kinneyville or Wimpyville ever again. And I've never heard, I knew it was Fox Market, I've never heard of Falky's before, but you have to be very careful how you say that. Closing statement time. Three minutes. Stan, you get to deliver.
Okay.
The first closing statement, and if you have notes you want to pull out first. Jared won't start the timer until you are ready.
Okay. Plainville, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for having me as a candidate. I felt that it's not useful to have only one person on the ballot. That was my number-one goal for running. And nothing against my opponent, but at the same time, democracy is two people running, or four people, or eight people, and we're the one that's down. So during my time as select board, I am proud of a lot of the accomplishments that were reached, done. Things that Plainville was having a problem with are resolved now. I feel that when Mr. Noble came on board, it changed a lot of the complexity of the town of Plainville. I did fight for Mr. Noble. I think I was the leading person getting him to come to Plainville. I'm very, very happy that he's in Plainville. Plainville has made great strides with him. I know that there's more strides to do. So the idea is, what I'm looking for is the people to put me in there, so I can be a conservative person, because I am conservative more than anybody else. And I know there's very hard times on decisions to be made in the next three years. So that's why I'm looking for the vote of the Plainville people. And I thank Plainville for this opportunity.
Thank you, Stan. Best of luck.
Okay.
Jeff, you have three minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you, Peter. And I want to echo the thanks to Plainville for the trust you placed in me six years ago, and the opportunity to ask for your vote again. We have an important choice here. We both talked about our problems, but you have the chance to vote for someone who's worked tirelessly to address them. Someone who recognized our lack of financial guidelines, allowed the creation of some of our fiscal problems, and wrote policies to protect us against that. Someone who dug into our connection and capacity charges, and pushed for developers to pay a more equitable share of the burden, so we have money to address our INI problems. Someone who reaches out to our surrounding towns and our area legislatures to collaborate, and who has spoken for our town in forums from Plainville to Beacon Hill on all manner of issues which impact us. Someone not afraid to own our problems and bring those challenges to our meetings, so that we can work to address them. There are two things that make me very proud, and from your key report cards for you to judge. The first is the unrequested credit rating upgrade by Moody's, which cited our strong financial performance, as well as the positive growth trends. The second is that we have the lowest average residential tax bill of any of our surrounding communities, while still providing the services our residents expect and deserve. We have managed to right-size our budget without burdening our residents with out-of-control taxes. I use the word "we" a lot there, because it is all about "we." We have a wonderful group of boards and committees in town. It's not my job to tell them what to do, but to ensure they have the support they need to continue doing their outstanding work. And that we have policies and goals for the town that allow us to work together. These challenges we face will require the best of all of us, and will require a leader who can work with everyone to bring the best forward. If you believe our improved financial condition, the maintenance of a relatively low tax burden, the improvements in our water quality and other infrastructure, the report card of our improved credit rating, the improved morale and effectiveness of our town departments are worthwhile, then vote for more of that. You know me from years of service in this town, at church, at the PAL, at Town Park and the food pantry, and you hopefully know my love of Plainville and the integrity of my commitment to it. Are we better off now than we were six years ago? I believe the answer is an unequivocal yes, and I believe I've earned your trust and your vote. Let's not look backwards. Let's keep moving Plainville forward. Please vote for Jeff on April 1st.
Thank you, Jeff. Best of luck.
Thank you, Peter.
Want to thank you for watching, and I hope you will be at the polls on April 1st. Want to thank Stephen Peterson, the Plainville correspondent for the Sun Chronicle, who is here, being very quiet in the corner, which is a necessity when you come into the studio. Our greeter, Ron Legace, our timer, Jared Ware, and our director, Chris Miller. Want to remind you that my one-on-one interviews with these two candidates, along with tonight's Candidates Forum, will run throughout the week, through the close of polls on election night on our Plainville channel, that's Comcast Channel 8, and also streaming for free to all Plainville residents by going to plainville.northtv.net. Also had a one-on-one interview with the two King Philip School Committee candidates and their Candidates Forum, all available at plainville.northtv.net. And this program is also in our archived programming, so you can scrub through it, you can go back, "What did he say?", "That's what I thought he said", et cetera. Go to northtv.net, go, click on the Plainville Channel logo, and then you'll scroll down, you will see Decision 2024. Click that, and you'll be able to watch this Candidates Forum, the one-on-one interviews, and the two from the King Philip School Committee. Polls will open at 7:00 a.m. on Monday, April 1st. They'll close at 8:00 p.m. North TV will be live from Town Hall with election results beginning at 8:15. Hope you go out and vote on April 1st, and hope you tune in later that night. Thank you for watching.